I'd like to call to order the charge to touch the Oxford Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 9th, 2017, time is 7 o'clock. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is that the role?
No, no.
Prove with the agenda. Any motion there?
I'll make a motion with the agenda as presented.
Support. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Any questions? Concerns? Motion?
I'll make a motion with the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Farrar?
Yes.
Court right, yes. Trustee Dar?
Yes.
And trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Let's move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. Any public comment? Singing? Easy crowd, yeah. Presentation of all the person's condition. Is that right here? All the person's condition.
There's someone just rushing in, Bill.
She's not here yet, Bill.
We're gonna move on. We'll put her on after the public hearing. It might be long. Let's give her a second. Thirty seconds to catch your breath. I understand she's a wonderful and nice lady. You're just in time. Come on right up to the podium.
Hello, how you doing?
I'm doing wonderful. You're at the OPC?
Yes, I am.
Well, I haven't met you personally, but I haven't talked to you. You are on the agenda. Take a couple seconds to catch your wind and get your stuff together.
Excellent.
Go. Do we need help? Switch it over. Control the podium.
Control the podium is something that...
Why do we need setting up all this to hold time?
Oh, okay.
You read the paper this week. CJ did cover stories on us. So we moved in our new offices as of Monday. We're up and running. Loose ends to fix, but the staff is in. We're up and operational. And again, what you'll see CJ just turned in our new task court to open. And I was telling Margie and Jack last night, all four courts are going. So they're getting a lot of use already. So if you get out of the park that way tomorrow or next week, we'd love to have you just stop in and say hi. We'll do an official grant opening probably in October, once we get everything fixed and closed up. But it's some exciting times. All of our ADA sidewalks and everything are concluded. Ryan Austin of Burnham Seal Coating did those for us. So Seymour is moving quickly. And seriously, as far as the bond goes, we're not sure if we're gonna have the outdoor skating rink in this year just because of some unique sponsorship opportunities that we may have by a company who would like to put their name on it. So I'm trying to work some magic there. And as a reminder, we're closing Stone Lake down after Labor Day. The pavilion roads have already started there, but after Labor Day, we're gonna start polarizing the parking lot at the boat launch, fixing the beachfront, putting all our ADA sidewalks in. So that park will be closed from Labor Day, probably until next spring. So that's just a quick update on the bond and our office. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Renee?
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. I'm really pleased to be able to present some information about the Meals on Wheels program that supports the seniors in the Oxford Township area. So if you give me a second here, I'm just going to get my PowerPoint presentation up.
I don't know my password, ma.
What's that?
I ran your password.
She don't need a password. Renee, can you talk and do that at the same time? So you're representing for people in the audience and the people up here at the podium, please.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Two seconds here. Very good. Okay. All right. Supervisor Dunn. Trustees, thank you for having me here today. I'm Renee Courtright, Executive Director for the OPC. And I'm pleased to talk to you about our program here. Brother, I'm sorry. Two seconds.
Do you need to be on the internet?
No. I'm not supposed to be on the internet this month.
How are you doing?
We'll do it without. It's all good. All right? That's all good. It's all good. So in 2016, the... Well, first of all, OPC has been delivering Meals on Wheels to the Oxford Township seniors, 60-plus, for over 25 years. And in 2016, OPC Nutrition Department prepared nutritionally balanced meals, 94,038 nutritionally balanced meals. So not only do we provide the seniors in Oxford Township Meals, we also provide the Meals for Rochester, Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, and then Addison, Branford, Brandon, Oxford, Orion, and Independence Township. So just in Oxford, in last year, we provided around 9,500 Meals for the homebound seniors. And the Meals on Wheels Satisfaction Survey that we give every year came back and said that 73% said it helped them live independently. 80% were... Excuse me. 70% are female, and 88 is the median age of a Meals on Wheels client. So what's different about our program is that we deliver Meals seven days a week. And it is a hot meal that is delivered at noon. And they also have the ability to also receive a cold meal. Not only are they receiving that hot meal, but they also receive the cold meal. And they receive the Meals during the holidays. And it's important to the seniors in your community. So eligibility and service options, 60 years and older, unable to grocery shop and prepare nutritious Meals. Eligibility is not based on income, and the Meals are received within 24 hours of request. And we really pride ourselves in that. Their short-term options are available for those that might be going through some rehab. Say they've had hip replacement or knee replacement and are not able to shop and prepare a meal for themselves. They have the ability to take advantage of the Meals on Wheels program during that time. And of course, if they're not eligible for the program, there is the Congregate Meal Program that's available for them within several communities. There's the one at Orion, Auburn Hills, Brandon, and at OPC and Independence Township. So it's more than just a meal. And I know that many in this area, in front of me here or within the audience, have had a family member, a neighbor who's benefited from the Meals on Wheels program. So it's more than just a meal. It's kind words. It's a wellness check that's provided by the volunteers. There's those handmade cards and placemats that are delivered by the school-aged children. We also always recognize everybody's birthday by delivering a birthday cake at their birthday and cards honoring them. And then we also have the daffodils that are delivered every year during the daffodil season. And we have poinsettias that are also given. We have so much generosity in our communities that it just warms my heart to know that those that are not having family nearby have that capability to have that home-delivered meal and that wellness check. So our volunteers are vital to delivering the OPC Meals on Wheels seven days a week. And individuals, families, church groups, and service organizations are encouraged to volunteer. So just to kind of give you an idea, the northeast Oakland County changing demographics. Just for Oxford Township, the 60-plus in 2015, based on Semcog's forecast, 2040, forecast is 3,303,400. Okay? By 2030, we're looking at 5,236. That's a 64% increase. That's 1 in 5 Oxford households has a resident at least 65-plus at this time. And that's based on details from Data Driven Detroit. So it just has this huge increase, 64%. That's quite astounding. So, you know, just a little bit of a food for thought in regards to the Meals on Wheels program. We received the grant through the Area Agency on Aging. Then there's USDA federal dollars that sum... So it's 42% from the grant from the Area Agency on Aging. Of course, you know that comes from the federal government, to the state government, to then to the Area Agency on Aging's, who then provide those funds for the different Meals on Wheels providers in Oakland County. Then we received the USDA dollars, which is 17%. 29% we fundraised at OPC in order to offset the cost of this program. And then 12% does come out of our general funds each year. It is our mission to provide those support services to our seniors in the community. So we continue to do that each year. So just to kind of give you an idea, something that isn't done in Oxford is a Congregate Meal Program, the Dining In Program. And as I mentioned, it's done at other centers in the area. Auburn Hills, OPC, and so forth. And I just want to kind of throw that out there as a thought for, in the future, for the Oxford Township area. I know that you have a building that is a possibility to have a kitchen on that site. Those Congregate Meals, it's a nutritional benefit, and there's also the social benefit. And that's with any senior programming. It's that social benefit, that connection, knowing that someone's there, looking for them, coming into the center. And when they're not there, hey, I wonder what's happening with Helen or Robert? And they have that connection of knowing that they can get a call by a friend who's looking for them each day. So the addition of a full-service kitchen would also be an asset to your community in regards to senior programming, of course. And that's that other supportive area of it. I know that we benefit from that at OPC when seniors come to exercise or do some type of card programs or that we have our language programs. They also stay after and benefit from the Meals that are provided within the kitchen at OPC in our dining room through the Dining In Program. So it could support all programs also, not just the senior programs. There's those special groups and, of course, the emergency preparedness, having a kitchen where you could provide Meals for those in case there was an emergency in this area. So just to kind of give you an idea, the seniors import money into our local economies. And Oxford seniors spend more than $4 million annually, and most of this is spent locally. When you're looking at the senior population, they're the ones that are going to benefit from the local grocery stores and, you know, your local retailers. They spend locally. And that is, you know, definitely, there's the data out there in regards to that. So just by 2030, older adults will account for nearly 20% of the Michigan population, which means 1 in 5 will be 65 and older. There are more seniors right now, 60-plus in Oxford than school-aged children. And 80% of individuals wish to remain in the comfort of their home. And OPC is here. I just want to make this request to you or call out to you to help the local officials respond to the needs of the growing senior population. And by helping to establish possibly a senior nutrition site, and also to help with establishing the senior programming in your community, which I think is really important to your community and keeping the seniors in their homes as long as possible. So I apologize for not having my PowerPoint. I will send it to you all afterwards. But I think you get adjusted what I'm talking about today. And I do want to say that we're very proud at OPC to have been the nutrition provider for the Oxford Township residents. And I also want to just do a little shout-out in regards to any seniors that are out there or family members or neighbors that know of someone that could benefit. They could call 248-608-0264 for... To call the Meals on Wheels number and just to see if they might be able to benefit or a family member might be able to benefit from Meals on Wheels.
Renee, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure, Bill.
Well, I've got a statement that I think your program is wonderful.
Thank you.
Another one. How can Oxford Township help you contact with people that need it? I know I just talked to Curtis. He's going to put that number on our website.
Fantastic.
What can we do as a community to get people to sign up if they need to?
Thank you. Well, we have a couple of flyers that we could send your way. So I will get those to you with a specific number for them to sign up for it. If you do have a website or if we can put a link on your website to the OPC website, we'd be happy to do that. I know it gets a little confusing because they think, why are they calling OPC if they're in Oxford? But because we're the nutrition provider for northeast Oakland County. But we could get you a link. We can get you some brochures in regards to that. And anytime I could... I don't know about your TV, your Oxford Township TV, if there's anything we can do in that regard.
I just happen to be chairman of the... I'm not chairman of that committee. I'm just on that committee.
Uh-huh.
We can make sure that we can get your message, please.
Very good. Very good.
Is there any more questions on... For Renee? Renee, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
You did a great job without...
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. And again, thank you for your support.
Let's move on to the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion for a public hearing to discuss resolution number 2 out of the Special Assessment District.
Support. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Court right, yes. Trustee Farrar? Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
The public hearing. Any questions? Public question? Anybody have questions?
Always.
Lauren? Haven't seen you in a while.
Been a long time. You guys are probably excited to see me again.
I love it.
I know. Things are good, you know, when you don't see me, right?
I didn't say that.
I can reach my goal. Lauren Allen, 2398 Bull Run. It seems like we're possibly, possibly to a conclusion on the... On the health view. I'm really not crazy about the way it all came down with the banks and the township caving and giving in to the banks. You know, that we've been battling this for a long, long time.
18 years.
And it took three years for them to get you guys to do what they wanted you to do. So I wasn't happy about that. But, you know, hey, it's come to a conclusion. So I'm happy about that. We finally got all the neighbors after 17 years. When it started affecting everybody is when finally they, you know, decided, okay, we better get involved. I've only really have a couple of questions to Joe. And it's just things that I've been hearing through the grapevine about. We've been... We've gotten all the legal garble, the CDs and the, you know, all the defendants and co-defendants and all that stuff that I don't understand when I read it. But we haven't seen a new plan as of yet. Or what the plan... There was nothing in that, any of that, above a plan. I know that there was a plan years ago in effect with easements and, you know, ditches being dug in the backs of properties and things like that. And my main concern is my lot. I've been hearing that there's gonna be a ditch between my lot and my neighbor's lot.
Lauren, can I just interrupt? Because I'd like to answer that question right now. I know you've got more. Jim, would you like to... Jim is the one that's going to come up with the remedy?
I do agree with you. You got a plan?
I do not have a plan.
I'm sure that Jim knows whether or not there's gonna be a ditch between my house and my neighbor's house. Is it gonna just be like a rip-rap ditch?
Less I remember, it's gonna be a rain garden.
How about a pipe you promised me for the last 15 hours?
That's gonna still be there.
There's gonna be a pipe all along my property?
Till it gets to the back of that rain garden.
Right. But from there, it's gonna go underground all the way across the road.
I don't know if the engineer...
No, I know. I was just... That was just a concern of mine. That was really the only concern, that there's a pipe keeping it from flowing in my yard. That's all.
It did change. One time it was supposed to be rain-garden down the property line between this and the...
It's open channel from the rear of the property to about where your propane tanks are?
That's... Joe? Thanks.
From the propane tanks to the south, that's where the pipe?
But that's still 3/4 of my property that the water's running through. That's the only concern I have. And I'm still... I'm not happy about it, but I really honestly don't think there's anything I can do about it now, right?
Should we add more pipe or do we need that for the rain garden?
What do you need a rain guard in my backyard for? Why can't it be in the back of my lot? Like it was supposed to...
That started out being something that the state wanted.
I know. And I understand that. But I've been promised for 15 years that there'd be a pipe back there running that water out of there, not coming through my yard, 3/4 of the way down my lot, and then into a pipe. I mean, that's what I was promised, that you would go to bat and it would be taken care of with a pipe to my yard the whole time. Because that's the major problem over there is the water in the yard. And then, you know, the pipe is a necessity for me. And that's where the biggest water flow in the whole sub goes through. So it's just...
Jim, I was adjusting the plans, add more pipe.
Oh, it takes money.
Sure that we could engineer something? Not the direction that we've been working in?
Yeah, I would like if I could possibly, or somebody else might like them too, a set of the plans and the actual, the actual plans that are to fruition on our...
The plans are available at the county offices, both the painting plans and the drainage plans. They've been up here since the special assessment was notified.
How long ago was that? I haven't been involved in the other...
Two weeks ago or something like that?
Yeah, right. It's just a recent...
They haven't not changed it. They've certainly upped the last set of drawings that you saw.
2013.
15 or something like that.
Right. Lauren, if you want, talk to Bill and I. We'll let Jim come up and we'll go through them again. Yeah, I'd like...
Before it was get together to specify time and take a look at it.
Sorry, but it's not... I mean, that's just something that I've been, you know, I've been dealing with this for 18 years, right?
I've been right beside you too.
Dan, I know. But that's... That was my... That was my whole... That's my whole deal, is that pipe being there from the back of my property? Getting that water out of there. Because that's the issue.
We're not gonna settle that here, but that's...
No, I know.
We will take a good look at it, but I want Jim there. Joe can be there. And I'm more than happy to sit there. See what we can do. Before it goes out to the...
Yeah. I mean, you know, if it's... If it's gonna cost us all our money.
Well, it will.
Yeah, well...
It's gonna cost us more money too.
Well, then so be it.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Lauren? Lauren, you got it? You guys need to say? You're all set?
Done.
I'm done. Okay. Does there any motion to close the public session?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Public hearing. Support. Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm the fire department budget amendment. Okay, Joe.
To approve resolution number 2 in regard to establishing out of the Special Assessment District. That's presented.
Move? Move is seconded by Margie.
This is another thing.
All in favor? Is that a... We all set with that?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that you don't forget to do that.
Okay. We got that covered, I believe. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have something else that we have to do and... We have a four-step process here? So should I read this? Should I read this or just... You know, we're gonna take a two-minute break. Don't make too much noise, but we're gonna try to do some paperwork to get the off-the-people. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a 255 Bull Run.
Am I open? We'll get you an answer.
It was gonna discuss the SAD, you know, what's gonna be happening with the... None of this was discussed. So I'm just trying to figure out...
We're gonna be doing that?
Oh, we are gonna be doing that?
I've got Susan here from our...
Okay. All right. I just wanted to...
Legal firm? We'll get you some questions and answers. Okay. I've got something else. This is the certificate from... I don't know yet. I'm not sure this looks... But there's a process we have to do to make sure it's all... We're in the research. I'm just talking now. They're saying... I'm gonna be back in session. I hope I do this right. I have this certificate regarding this petition. Lauren forgot. I'm gonna read it. It's just... This is certified that I, William Dunn, supervisor and assessing officer, charge of township Oxford, Oakland County, Michigan, made the person having charge of the assessment role of said township and checked the petition for the Special Assessment District, SAD, for out of the states, which was signed and submitted in accordance with the terms of proposed consent to the ball judgment in Oakland County Circuit Court, case number 2012-130875-CH, and do hereby certify that said petition has been signed by the record orders of more than 50% of the total land area within the boundaries of the proposed SAD and of more than 50% of the footage within the boundaries of the proposed Special Assessment District as described in the Special Assessment District petition on the date of filing of the Special Assessment District. Signed, believe it or not. The next one. I'm presenting to this township board the assessment role for out of you. And I'm going to be presenting it to our clerk. Anything good? Ready to start? Is that it, Susan?
It just doesn't be part of the...
Yeah, these will be part of the notes of this meeting. Thank you. It's one of the fire department budget amendment. Is there any questions on this? Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Further discussion on out of you. Susan, we probably have some questions. I'm gonna have people from Bull Run come on up here and ask your question, and we'll try to get some answers for you.
Go ahead. Give the...
Lauren, your question's...
Hello, yeah. I'm John. Deputy Doozy, the 255 Bull Run. And I was just wondering when the assessment's gonna start? When we're gonna start seeing a process of being done? And how it's gonna reflect if we sell our house? So on and so forth, how that's gonna work out?
For everybody's information, the consent to ball...
was just presented by Bell, looked at by Oakland County Equalization. The concept here is that the assessment would start this December tax bill. There will be bidding that's done for the actual construction that will be just after the first of the year. Hopefully that would mean that the prices will be lower because it's in the winter. You'll see in the resolution that was passed here and was part of the board packet, that there will be two future hearings, just to find out if there is any change in the ultimate construction costs as bid. That will be the hearing for the regular township board meeting in March, which I believe is what, March 14th of next, next spring, with, if necessary, if, if there's any change needed in the assessment role, and that's all spelled out, as you probably recall, in the consent default judgment, you know, there's a cap on, you know, how much it could increase. But if it goes down, that will result in a, an change as well. But that final meeting would be on the regular township board meeting on April 11th of next spring. And that will then, the construction costs will be known, and that will be sort of the final wrap-up of the costs. But the, the base amount would start being assessed. And again, this is spread over a 20-year period, but that'll start in the December township tax levy.
Will there be a lien on our house then, until this is paid off, or is it just automatically rolled into the taxes?
Well, it's, it's like any special assessment, it would be treated like that. I mean, to the extent that there's...
I've never had a special assessment, so I don't, I don't know what the...
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's like a, it's a, it's another kind of a tax lien.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's just how it is during the, you know, the course of the 20 years of the assessment.
Right now, Jeff, they're looking at making it assumable, which means that if you resigned your home, you'd pay the installments, you'd pay them, and the new person would take it over.
Okay.
They're not making it paid off at closing.
That's negotiated though.
Yeah, that is negotiated to it, from the buyer to the seller.
That's automatically happened. You have to be in agreement with whoever's buying the house. He may say, I want you to pay that off.
Okay.
And then, you know, I'd like to reflect on the buyer for some of this. And it is, it's not automatic.
Okay. So, once this is paid off then, will our taxes be lowered then?
Yes.
They will be?
Oh, well, if you paid it off.
Discussion assessment will be paid. I don't want your taxes to be lower, the special assessment.
But once the assessment's gone, then...
Yeah, then that'll be done.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Laura?
Yeah, why, why is the special assessment going to start in December, when we're not even sure when this, the construction of this whole project is going to even start at all?
Well, the construction is planned to start next spring, as soon as the...
Water's flowing.
Things are, frost laws are off, and it can be done. The way the concept was to try to, and Jim perhaps can do it better, the idea was to get better in prices when it's bid in the off-season.
Correct. But why, why this December, we're paying taxes for something that hasn't even started?
Because part of the assessment relates to something that will already have happened, which is the need to purchase the very, the 100-acre lot, which is necessary for drainage. So, that's going to all happen.
They're buying that?
Yes.
Well, there's a contribution from the homeowners as well, at least, you know, a smaller percentage of that.
So, what if, what if they don't start in the spring, and we're paying these taxes all this time? I know it's not a lot of money each year, but what if it doesn't start in the spring, something comes up, and they don't start it in the spring, we've been paying taxes since December?
I mean, the township board can answer as to, I think, every intent.
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious as to why December, and I kind of got an answer out of it, because you need the money ahead of time to get things rolling, I suppose.
Correct. Township's front a lot of money in about a month.
Once you get everything okayed, then signed on the dotted...
Oh, yeah. A lot of things are starting happening.
Yeah, right. Do you anticipate when any of that's going to happen?
I suppose it's going to happen pretty quick, once all this stuff is done.
I mean, that's...
The closings on the purchase, I mean, there's purchases of, you know...
Lots and property easement rights, because that's something I don't, I'm not keen on either.
It's projected to, to happen, I mean, the first, it's going to be in two parts, because the, you know, there's a time period after this special assessment district that we have to, you know, to wait, and that we don't get at the time hearing. But the first installment of closing and payment will be at the end of 30 days after today's date. And then the next one is going to be scheduled on, I believe, October 2nd.
Are we, are we still footing part of the bill for the $100,000 we're paying for easements of the empty lots down the street?
No, that's not part of the...
That's, that was in one of the papers that you're paying $100,000 for easements to the empty lots, the five lots. That was probably a year ago, we got...
Yeah, that, that is correct. That's part of the whole.
Right. And we're, I mean, that is accumulated in all of our...
No, that part of it is not being, the, the property acquisition is only related to the acquisition of Lot 61.
Well, basically, it's a shift. We're paying less for Lot 61, and because of the way the ownership of the Braco is, certain people own Lot 61, another group owns the five lots. Basically, it's a shift. We're paying less for 61.
But you still allocated it as easement, $100,000 for easements that nobody lives on.
But it's the same price.
But I just wanted to put this out there. You're not paying for any of the easements that people live on.
No, but that's part of the whole purchase process.
Because we don't have, because you don't have to pay for those ones, right?
No.
Could you force that on us?
No, because of the whole easement process, there's a certain price we agreed upon with Braco. The way they've got their interworkings, we'd have given that full price on Lot 61. That's a chunk. And then the easement is the language for the other piece.
It's, it's not just language, it's $100,000.
But they're paying $100,000 less on the Braco piece. But the total is the six hundred.
You know where I, how I feel about easement ordeal. We've had this conversation before.
Correct.
Couple. Any other questions for the Alview? Don't worry, we can do a lot. Under the budget amendment, fire EMS fund. Any questions on this?
I guess I, I looked at this and I studied a little bit today. That fund's been closed out since April. I talked to you a little bit about it. I don't really think it's needed. It's no longer existing anyway. It'll all get wrapped up when the 213 budget is amended come December.
So, is there, how do you reconcile it?
It's already going to be reconciled because it's already been moved over to 213. You'll see 213 will come in for the cash influx from the 211 and 210. It'll be coming in as a group in a budget amendment already. So, it's going to be there. It's going to come in because it's, those funds are going to close out.
It's, it's my understanding that Raina asked that this be done so that it's clean. It's not like it's, you know, like a couple hundred bucks that she can move at the end of the year. It's, I mean, it's $35,000, and I think Raina wanted it to be clean.
Yeah, that's correct. I asked the auditor, because it couldn't be included in last year's transfer of what was remaining in the 211 fund, she recommended that, because a budget was not proposed or adopted for the 211 fund for this year, in order to accurately trace the, and document the funds that were going into the 211 fund that were received in March, that we should create this budget amendment, which after this year's fund, this year's accounts are audited and the books are all closed for this year, it will be reflected in the 211, which is where Joe was saying, the funds currently sit. So, it, it's just really a documentation of where those funds came from and where they're going to go.
I mean, it's kind of one of those six to one, half dozen of another. Let's do one. One or the other.
I move to approve the 2017 added fire EMS average and fire budget, 211, with revenues and expenditures balancing at $35,237.62, and attach a copy of the amended budget as an amendment.
Hard to shut off when you're...
It is.
I've been there. It's been moved?
I support.
Seconded by trustee Curtis.
Okay.
Seconded by Curtis. Any other questions? Roll call. Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake special assessment district. Kirk, clerk Wright?
Yes, we are, we are starting the process back to point zero again, and the petitions have been submitted. And they have been checked by the clerk's office, and we have confirmed those signatures. And now we need to forward these on to the engineer to confirm the land area and also provide an estimated cost. So, with that, I'll move to authorize Sharp Engineering to determine the boundary area and the cost estimate for the purpose of creating a special assessment district to eradicate weeds in Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake.
Remove? They have seconded. Any other discussions?
Just one more thing. This right here shows you the area of those that have signed the petition to...
Is that the yellow?
Yes, that's the yellow.
So, we're 50%, correct?
No, we don't know that yet. The engineers determine that.
Okay.
The signatures have been confirmed, and that's something that engineer Sharp will bring back to the township board.
73% by equal vote.
Uh, it's been moved. They have supported. Let's do a roll call.
All right, supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
And trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Moving on to the final site plan Savannah Ridge Estates. Questions on this?
Yes. Uh, today earlier, supervisor Dunn and I spoke with attorney Morrison on some, just some profound issues on that, so I don't know if those need to be part of the motion to prove or whether to prove in contempt or just to prove.
Those were very minor adjustments. It's either a word or a number. So, we do that motion contingent upon those being cleared up. They're very, they're very minor. They had J instead of one. And town, instead of 10 north, it had 10J north, 10J 0 north.
I move to approve the final site plan for parcel 04-31-300-002, Zoned R3, single-family residential for the development to be known as Savannah Ridge Estates, contingent on the conditions being satisfactorily completed as required by the charter township of Eiford Plan and Commission at their 2000, May 25th, 2017 meeting, and the corrections made to the supporting documents to correct the errors.
Second. Move and second.
I don't know if I have to call out each error, but we know the errors.
You know, their errors are minor, they're just...
Type graph.
Type graphical errors. They will, they will... Susan, can you believe he found those?
He's...
Is it great proof for you?
You should see his great sheets.
Roll call.
Uh, trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dart?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
I kind of agree with Joe Ferrari. I liked the PUD when it came through. I liked everything about it. They had two ways in. They were legal to do. But now we have a boulevard with a long cul-de-sac, and it made sense. But I'm not going to hold the project up because of it. I wish I would have had a different boat at that time. And that's it? It goes, goes through. Uh, let's move on to the sewer charge, Christ the King Church.
We have one more.
One more.
Yeah, should we move on to safety?
Oh, for... So, I don't get to help you, it doesn't matter. Savannah Ridge, payment and blue.
I move to allow Clearview Homes LLC, the developer of Savannah Ridge Estates, Savannah Ridge Estates, to provide payment and blue construction of a safety path in the amount of $68,525. The safety path fund is a term by the construction cost estimate from Sharp Engineering. A written contract shall be executed by Clearview Homes LLC, the charter township of Oxford, as a condition of final site plan approval. I'll require supervisor William Dunn to sign the written contract on behalf of the charter township of Oxford.
Second.
Remove and supported. Seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sewer charges, Christ the King. I did this morning call over to Christ the King and tried to, to talk to someone about our concern that Jack and I have. Apparently, Christ the King had a water main break and for some time, and they received, one of just rather about a $7,000 charge. Their normal bill would have been, I believe, around $150. They kind of petitioned us to take a look at it. And Jack, why don't you take on, give the word to sewer that?
Yeah. With that petition, I'd like to take this to the water sewer committee. And I know that we've, we've given them their estimated bill, but let's just verify that the repairs were made, they were actually leaking, they are repaired now. They were repaired satisfactorily. I don't know if any permits were pulled, I don't know if it was required to be pulled. There's some answers that need to be done before we walk away from a $7,000 water charge.
And is anybody here for Christ the King? Would you like to look? No, really good guy. Well, we're not going to embarrass him, sir.
I'm the major supervisor of Christ the King. And where this, I wasn't, I didn't even know about the sewer charge. But where they're charging us, there's no sewer back there.
No, this is a water charge, sir.
The water charge there has already been paid. There's also a sewer charge.
It's sewer.
This is what they, there's two, two...
It affects the sewer charge.
It's based on the meter, and the meter ran.
See, that's why I said we would like to send this back to the water sewer committee. We'd invite you to come, we want to talk about it a little bit before we determine what's going on. We, we don't have all the information.
Yeah, the agency just sent me over. I'm the only one that was able to come, so.
Okay.
Now, could you just pass along that we would like to see any bills that were used to fix this break?
Sure.
Can we hear the bell, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we forward the request from Christ the King Church and the sewer invoice to the water sewer committee for their study and a recommendation back to the township board.
It's part. Remove and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Town reverend Hall will, will be taking a good look at it.
All right.
Thank you. On to the fiscal year 2018 township budget calendar. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm going to adopt the 2018 township budget calendar as presented.
Remove and second. Uh, before we do that, let me bring it up. I want to be sure that where it doesn't conflict with my birthday.
Oh, God, we don't want that to happen.
No, but, you know, conflict with...
Your birthday.
Something, no, I was... Uh, budget calendar.
Yeah, people's on wheels, bring it up for your birthday.
You did a cake.
Were you going to cake too?
No, it wasn't the, uh...
Tell them.
Township budgets calendar 2018.
I was thinking the bigger one. I was thinking about the scheduled year.
You were thinking of the cake.
Yes, thinking of the cake. Cake got to me. I don't have any questions.
So, what meeting dates are we having? According to this, is the budget workshop that's...
21st?
13th, 13th, September.
And we doubt the budget on the 20th.
And these are special meetings for this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thinking of the cake, cake got to me, I don't have any questions.
So what meeting dates are we having, according to this, is the budget workshop, it's?
The 21st?
Thirteenth, September. We adopt the budget on the 20th. And these are special meetings for this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you everyone for putting up the finger.
I move to appoint Trustee Curtis and Trustee Payne as the employee evaluation review team, with consideration of any recommended wage adjustments, fiscal year 2018. Support.
Moved and seconded, is there any questions?
Yeah, I will get either.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, move. A special, special board meeting.
For?
Already started, go ahead. Are we going to go in front with a motion on item 11C?
Thank you.
We just do that?
No, you adapted the budget calendar, but you didn't set the budget hearing.
I move to set a special Township Board Budget Hearing Meeting for 7:00 PM, Wednesday, September 20th, 2017. Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Susan.
I move to set a special meeting for the Charter Township Oxford Board Trustees for 7:00 PM, Wednesday, August 30th, 2017, to include the Upview Special Assessment District. Support.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, to Park and Rec Retirement Plan, Michael Davis.
I was expecting like nine o'clock before I got to stand up there, pretty amazing, if you're almost, that's what the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Basically, start playing.
Yeah, it is too bad, isn't it? Um, I, I handed out letters from our staff, and I, basically, what we're looking at, we started this process a year ago, um, of maybe leaving the Burnham and Flowers Retirement Plan, uh, who are located in Calm, they've been our financial, our retirement, I, I guess I call them an administrator, for the 20 years that I've been here, um, to say that's a little disappointing in the service that we've received is an understatement, uh, from a financial standpoint, so, myself and Andy Hunter, who is here, and Tom is, I've got your last name, Tom, who is part of this, and Phil Cassoni, the chairman of our Parks and Commission, we started working on this a year ago to, to try to make this happen, where we could better utilize our funds and keep them local, so by eliminating Burnham and Flowers, we would deal with Andy Hunter and Edward Jones in Oxford, our money would stay with John Hancock, that's who it currently is with, and we bring Tom on as our administrator, and you guys don't have been hearing from, misspeaking at all, as our administrator, so, um, we, we've met with them, I've done several conference calls with Tom and Andy and, and John Hancock, John Hancock, I'm sorry, uh, July meeting, the Parks and Recreation Commission, passed the idea of going local, 5-0, uh, so it is before you tonight, 'cause we would have to break away from your retirement plan with Burnham and Flowers, allowing us to go with Edward Jones, so again, Andy's here, Tom's here, Phil's here, if you have any questions, I would ask that you ask the professionals, they will have a better answer to your questions than I would.
No.
Another thing I would just say, from my standpoint, it would be nice to, to be able to deal with someone local seven days a week, if I need it, then wait once a year for 15 minutes, and that's pretty much what you get with Burnham and Flowers, so, uh, you know where I stand, I deal in local, I rarely see our money stay here, they go on the other side of the state, and give our employees the flexibility of, of taking their money and investing how they see, or with the advice of a financial planner, to better themselves, so.
I agree with you, Ron, I would like to have done what we did, kind of polled people at work and not everybody was on board.
Right.
So.
And I, no, I didn't wanna say that, the township did look at doing it, uh, with their employees, but there wasn't enough to do it, so, uh, let's be honest, you know me, I'm, I'm looking out for my team and our staff, and we're gonna do what's best for us, and it doesn't mean if we break off and the township changes their mind, I'm sure you could jump on board with us at some point, but, um, I don't see any reason personally that it doesn't work, that it won't work, and it would be the best interest for us.
Ron, you might not be the one to ask this, but is there any ramifications from you taking some of our funds, uh, total funds, and splitting them up, basically, uh?
Turn it over to Andy or Tom.
You know what I'm talking about, Andy?
He invited.
We got a total amount of money in there, unless a unit takes some away, is there any ramifications for each one or even one?
That's a fair question for you to ask, um, unfortunately, I don't have access to the township numbers currently, uh, the last time we had a conversation about that, there are certain thresholds, uh, economies of scale with a retirement plan, in this case, the costs are through John Hancock, the cost is now through Edward Jones or third credit administrator, uh, the cost is through John Hancock, and I don't know exactly where the numbers are, uh, but those thresholds, if you are below those thresholds, the cost can go up a little bit, if you're above them, they give you an economy of scale discount, so depending on where all those numbers fall, there could be a slight extra cost or not, I don't know. And again, I apologize for not having those numbers, but that's not.
If I may weigh in, we did have a conference call with.
What's your name for everybody?
Tom Boyens, with the benefit advantage.
Come on up here and speak into the microphone for the TV audience.
My name is Tom Boyens, with the benefit advantage, uh, just wanted to add that we had a conference call with John Hancock last month regarding this same topic, and we were told that there wouldn't be any, uh, price increase on the Oxford Township side, of course, that can change, um, in time, but that's what we were told, what was that, about three weeks ago?
Yes, the dollar amounts are always gonna be target, because we're invested, but John Hancock has access to those numbers, and at that time, they told us that there wouldn't be any price increase.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we're okay, but again, we don't know.
Trying to protect and argue.
Sure. Yeah, the question I would ask is, $500,000, it's half percent, a 1% service charge, a million dollars, it's a half percent, is that what you're talking about?
It's that tiny scale, that's right, those numbers don't apply.
So when the parks pull their money out, our fund may drop below the amount, and our percent being service charged would increase or stay the same.
Could.
Yeah, we don't know that, but, my question's fine.
Any, uh, board, any board questions here?
It's initially the same program.
It is, our money is staying.
It's definitely administrative.
Exactly the same program, just different advisor and different administrator.
I move to approve the resolution to transfer the Parks and Recreation employees in the Oxford Group Pension Plan to another third-party administrator and separate the John Hancock account.
Moved and seconded, any other questions? Still a roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Darke.
Yes.
Court right, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
On behalf of our staff, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Just one comment, sir.
Yes, seconded.
I think it's great that you're putting it into local business, I'm all for it, I like your attitude, great.
Thank you, again, we appreciate it.
Let me see you, Andy, so I got all my, I was off for a week, so, lots of emails and phone calls.
All right.
Let's move on to, I didn't remove none, public comments. Say none? Yes, sir.
Randy Davison.
Congratulations on your 61 years of being married.
Pardon me?
Congratulations on your 61 years of.
Well, thank you, thank you, that's more like a sentence than a. Sixty-one years hardly.
Mary Ann doesn't watch TV, righty, does she?
And, uh, it's kind of the same thing tonight, the young lady that was here from the.
OPC?
The OPC, kind of, I don't know, it's interesting, Renee Court right, um, I had some businesses down in Alabama, old senior business, as a matter of fact, and, um.
Randy, pull it, pull it.
How's that?
Better.
And, um, I learned the value of, of retirees, the southern states, cities are after our retirees big time, uh, I saw a study, a report in the local paper that was done by University of Alabama, and they, um, indicated that one senior come into an area, one retiree, excuse me, uh, was worth four industrial jobs, and at that point, I said, oh, wait a minute, I don't, I don't believe this, you know, but they're been on, and, and there means a mix of points, in that, when a retiree comes to an area, they bring the equity from where, whatever they were living in before, a house, condo, and so on, and they, they spend it on some type of living down there, or they put it in the local bank, their pensions and social securities go into the local banks, they require a lot of health care, business for doctors and hospitals, they buy cars, they eat out a lot, they don't put any children in the schools, they don't cause, generally speaking, any problems with law enforcement, it goes on and on, so, when, when this young lady gave her a report, I think, yes, very important, four million dollars she's estimating goes into the Oxford economy, I can believe it, when you see the amount of people that, retirees that we have here, pensions, social securities and so on, that are respent, uh, back into the community, so anyway, I wanted to make those comments to you that, um, uh, oh, yeah, um, they have a lot of activities for seniors down there, and one of the things that they get around Alabama does, they have something called the aqua dome, it's a huge glass cover, goes over Olympic-sized pool, seniors for $5 a month could have a membership there, and, um, they have classes for them on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, two hours each day, they have a leader up there leading the exercises for them, because as you know, may know, um, exercising in water is a lot easier on your joints and so on, and the benefit is about two to three times walking in water compared to walking on a sidewalk out there, um, in addition to that, they had a gymnasium that most high schools would like to have, um, had exercise room, television on the wall, and, um, all the, all the exercise equipment, um, lunch or twice a week, they had lunches, and they usually had someone from one of the hospitals, a dietitian, uh, leading them, you know, giving people ideas on various things that would benefit their health, and, um, so they just had a lot of things going on, now admittedly, you can't compare Oxford Township to Decatur, Alabama, because of size, Decatur is a city of like 55,000 people, so anyway, I wanted to make those comments, um, that, um, I think, that was interesting, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. For the trustee comments, starting with Alja.
No, I don't have any.
Eddie?
No.
Curtis?
No comments tonight.
None, none.
I thought that was a very interesting statistic that this gentleman brought up about, about seniors moving into the community, and, you know, I, I love it, and the woman that was here from OPC, I thought that was a great presentation, even without her computer, I, I think we need to, you know, do more for our senior citizens, and, you know, as, as much as we possibly can, that's it.
Jack?
I have two, one, uh, planning commissioner John Noldesma passed away Monday, he, uh, he is down in Fort Wayne handling that business, uh, number two, the Lakeville Road Water Project, I talked to Jim on the way over, um, Tuesday, this is the tentative date for hookup, but I, I'm waiting to see the final bill, but if you take a ride through the route of the Lakeville Water Project that we did, and see the good, the great job that they did, putting the pipe in the ground, remediating everything, the contractor did a great job, our engineer did a great job with inspecting and follow-up with everything, it really looks nice, the school, I went through there yesterday, they were doing the last of the hydro seeding, some of the sodding was going on, everything is done, ready, and gonna be hooked up as soon as Tuesday, all the testing's been done, so, kudos to our water people, including Engineer Sharp and the contractor, and everybody on this board that approved it and had it to go. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Followed? You're clear.